Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. We had just come out of executive session to go into public session. So I'll read the agenda. Executive session was to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and approval of executive session meeting minutes. Tonight's regular agenda is citizens' input. Seven o'clock, 7:05 Foxborough Commission on Disability, new member appointment. 7:15 CBS Scene Patriot Place LLC, change of DBA name from CBS Scene to CBS Sporting Club. 7:30 PM, Board of Selectmen, approval of town manager evaluation. 7:40, selectmen's update. 7:50, town manager's update. Eight o'clock, assistant town manager's update. And then, action items. That will do the pledge of allegiance. Jim, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Seven o'clock, anybody here for citizens' input?
I'm back again in the 30th Parker in 79 West Street. As you know, on May 15th, 2018, I attended a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I spoke during citizens' input about lack of transparency in regards to regional dispatch. As of today, I still have yet to receive a copy, a complete final copy of feasibility study for the project. Even though on January 24th, 2017, at the Foxborough Board of Selectmen meeting, Mansfield Police Chief Salin stated that the town managers of Foxborough Mansfield Leith and Norton had been given copies of this document. At the end of my citizens' input, I asked what information the Board of Selectmen used to approve such an important issue as regional dispatch is seen as at a prior selectmen's meeting when asked if they had seen a copy of the feasibility study. All members that were asked said no. As of today, I'm still waiting for someone to tell me what information was used to approve such an important decision on regional dispatch. I also asked when regional dispatch would be on these Board of Selectmen's agenda. Again, as of today, I have no response. Other issues that lead to my question of transparency. On June 4th, there was an article posted on the Foxborough Patch, and basically it just says, "Foxborough Town Manager Bill Keegan told the town's Board of Selectmen last week that the report on the new location, the old High Rock AT&amp;T Communications Center, came back positive. They're going to be looking to move from the original site, the current Mansfield Police Station. He told the board that everything will likely be made official June 14th." Yet, on March 14th, two months before this, at the advisory committee meeting, town finance director Randy Scollins detailed the regional 901 facility to be located in Foxborough. So I asked how, two months before, it's going to even be voted on by the Seminole Board of Directors, town finance director Randy Scollins would know that it was going to be located in Foxborough. At a selectmen's meeting, number two, at a selectmen's meeting, there was a discussion about making sure regional dispatch and central dispatch, which we have now, was kept separate so the town actually knows whether it is saving money with regional dispatch. The reason for this was so that the town does not have the same issue they had when Public Works was created, and there's nowhere way to tell if the town was saving money. Yet, at the town meeting, there was a warrant article that asked $53,250 for the apportionment of regional dispatch, with that amount to be added to central dispatch, which we have now. So if the amount was added to central dispatch, how will the town know how much it spends on regional dispatch? Should be a separate category in the budget for regional dispatch. At the selectmen's meeting on January 24th, 2017, I questioned the total of the salaries that was used in the regional dispatch presentation, as what I had added up was different than the amount that was presented. Mr. Keegan was quick to point out that the difference was for police officers working in dispatch when it could not be filled with dispatches. In my Freedom of Information request dated March 5th, 2018, I asked for names and salaries to back up Mr. Keegan's quick response. The answer I received was that that information is not available. On the Freedom of Information request dated March 5th, 2018, I also asked for any correspondences or contacts by any representatives of the town of Foxborough to American Tower, the company that currently owns the High Rock Road building being considered as a regional dispatch location. Mr. Keegan stated there have been no contact by any town representative with American Tower. Yet several times, Mr. Keegan has stated a representative of the Foxborough Fire Department has been in contact with American Tower in regards to the High Rock Building. In closing, I'd like again, once again, ask for a copy of any documents that the Board of Selectmen used to make the decision to pursue regional dispatch. And once again, information that I provided, I hope someone could explain how this process could be considered transparent.
Thank you. Anybody else for citizens' input?
Yeah, hi. I'm Jim Mullin from 6 Winter Street. My concern is for, I get my trash picked up on Friday. For two Fridays in a row, I looked out my window and watched the people from Dooley dutifully go over, pick up the trash, put it in the truck. Dooley will pick up the recycling and put it in the same truck and the same trough. I realize they're probably struggling because of the Chinese tightening up their requirements for, requirements for recycling, but is this known, or are we supposed to know that? People spend a lot of time and energy separating this stuff to just have it thrown away ultimately.
So we can't comment on that. That's something, that's a private company. You'd have to take that up directly with Mr. Dooley.
They have a contract with you, though, right?
No, they do not. No, they're, they're, it's a private company. They actually, they do provide services to the town to pick up some town buildings, but that's about it. But we don't have a contract with them to provide services for the town residents. It's actually, the company is, is a private company. You as individuals contract with him directly.
Okay. Sorry, thanks.
But Bill, we do have a bylaw that, they have certain requirements that they have to meet with safety and--
There are guidelines, right. There are certain guidelines, right.
Okay. And recycling is not one of those guidelines, if they say they're recycling?
No, it, well, it's not, it's not so much that. And I don't know, and the gentleman said he's, he's seen this, but I haven't, you know, spoken to him directly. It's the first time I've heard of this. And I can certainly call Dooley myself and ask him the same question. But it's a, a lot of times, these have split, they have split vehicles, where they have two type, two separate, so in the same set, same exact trough. Okay, well, I'll take your word, take you for your word, but I can call him directly and ask him that, but--
Could you look into that with AJ to--
Yeah, I'll ask him. I'll ask him to do it. But, like I said, it is, it is a private company.
Thank you. Clear enough.
Yo.
So can I, through the chair, so this gentleman's come in front of us three or four times now to talk about the central dispatch, and I think his wife's been emailing the board a number of times. How long is this going to go before, I remember at some of the meetings, we had said we're going to get him the information, and he's saying he's not getting anything.
I, I, we, I can, I can sit here and give you lengthy, lengthy amount of information that we've given the gentleman.
So how do we resolve it? It's frustrating. I shouldn't say frustrating, but when someone sits on citizens' input and we don't, we can't respond--
Right.
And we look to you to solve it--
I was going to actually address it during my, during my report, because I'm equally frustrated by this whole thing. We've offered both him and his wife to come in and sit with us, and they, and they refuse to. So, I mean, I, I don't know what else we can do.
Let's address it.
So I'm happy to address it, but--
I'm just trying to address it--
It's equally frustrating for us.
You know, it, it sounds like he's got a lot of information, and we sit here and can't respond. It's either, if it's going to keep happening, put it on the agenda, or, or solve it, or if it's unsolvable, say it's unsolvable.
We've, we've had multiple people trying to try and solve it, and, even at the state level, and they, they've, they're giving information too, and it just, it just doesn't, they don't seem to be happy with the responses, so. Sorry about that, but it's equally frustrating for us.
To Bill's point, it would be great to just put everything we have on the table, invite them in, and say, "What are you missing?"
Yep.
And that's what we've offered to do.
So, but, we can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda, so--
I've been waiting half years for the report, and I paid $100,000 for it. And no one gave it to me.
Well, that's not true. We've actually offered you the report. We gave you the report.
No, I got a track report for out of work.
It's the only report we have, sir.
So there wasn't that.
Okay.
Okay.
7:05, Foxborough Commission on Disability, new member appointment.
I'm Sue Collins. I'm chair of the Foxborough Commission on Disability, and we're very happy to present Chuck Gallagher, who has applied to be on our commission. Right now, one of his duties is to educate the public on, there's no excuse to use accessible parking, which we're trying to change the wording from handicap access to accessible parking, which, there's a new sign out, out front, which hopefully, another job we want to do is to make all the signs uniform around the town, so.
Question with the, the parking situation, what about like sidewalk accessibility too? You guys, as I've noticed, and I've heard from a lot of residents, of like people parking on sidewalks on some of the side streets, so does that fall under you guys? Is the, so say if you're in a wheelchair and you're coming down a sidewalk and there's vehicles parked all over the sidewalk--
That falls under the police department, I believe.
Police department.
Parking violation, which is another issue that I'd like to address as we go down the road, this to maybe revamp the parking ticket books that we have in town and update into what offenses have been taking place on the regular basis that need to be addressed, and some fines and stuff like that, to see what the town's thoughts are on it.
Anybody on the board have any questions, discussion on this?
All right, move to approve the appointment of Charles Gallagher as new member to the Foxborough Commission on Disability for a one-year term, beginning on June 12th, 2018, and expiring on May 1st of 2019.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, 7:15 CBS Scene Patriot Place LLC, change of DBA name from CBS Scene to CBS Sporting Club. Hello, gentlemen.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Members?
Stephen Miller, McDermott, Cynthia Miller. And me is Chris Klein, who's the manager of record for CBS Scene. We're requesting your approval to change the name from CBS Scene to CBS Sporting Club. Our request is based on two issues. One, it's been in existence for approximately 10 years, and we're doing a, I guess, an upgrade as far as renovation and upgrade to the facility, a facelift. But more importantly, the focus is changing from CBS Television to CBS Sports, hence the name, going to CBS Sporting Club. We're on the agenda to come before you on June 26th for approval of alteration of premises and, and other items, and at that point, we can, we'll walk you through the floor plan, which is going to be significantly smaller than the existing three floors now, but at this point, we're seeking your approval for the change to CBS Sporting Club.
Any questions from the board? Dave, any questions? Is the, is it currently open now, or are you doing the renovations now?
Doing the renovations now.
Okay. When's it scheduled to open?
Um--
It's just what Brian wants to see.
July 9th?
Okay.
I do have a question. Chris, you're going to still be the manager of record?
Yes, sir.
So just a name change for right now?
Name change right now, yes.
All right. Move to approve the change of DBA name from CBS Scene to CBS Sporting Club in connection with the annual all alcohol license, communal vicular license, seven, seven-day entertainment license.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you. We'll see you at the end of the month.
Fingers crossed, right?
It was easy. It was easy. Good to see you, Steve. All right. Always a pleasure. Good to see you. Take care.
See you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Dave, I'm ahead of schedule.
Oh, boy. We started late.
Yep, started late. All right. We can go through the agenda, I mean, because none of these are public hearings, so let's do the Board of, Board of Selectmen, approve town manager evaluation.
So, just confirming that the town manager's contract is based upon satisfactory performance evaluation effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. I presented at the last meeting, at a previous meeting, a summary of Mr. Keegan's evaluation, and it was indeed above satisfactory. So, looking for a motion to approve the contract provision, to go forward with contract provision based on this satisfactory performance evaluation.
Move to approve the town manager evaluation.
Second.
Under discussion? So when this came, I want to have a discussion with the board a little bit about this, because when this came in front of us, let me back up. So the process that we have now is, we all do the evaluation. It's all, it's all computerized, right? So I don't see what you write, or you write, and you don't see what I write. It goes directly to the assistant town manager. The assistant town manager disseminates it, scores it, and then gives us the overall evaluation, ratings, and the comments, okay? The way it used to be is, the board came up with the questions and ran the process, and we had a dialogue, and we could share information and discuss it. So what it asked at the last meeting was, could we see the comments? And they said, well, we discussed that it wasn't public record. And I disagree. Everything's public record. The way it comes up, and it's brought to the town, it's public record.
Not personnel records.
Let me finish, please. It is public record. If it's not released to the public, it has to meet a certain criteria. It's always public record, and if it's held back, then it doesn't go out to the public. Right?
Evaluations, though, are--
No.
Part of a personnel file. I mean, the personnel ones evaluations we do at work are locked in a personnel file and--
But they're still public record. They don't, they don't disappear.
There's been recent, a recent case on specifically this topic, town manager performance evaluations, and the summary document is the only public record.
Okay, so, so we can disagree, because I, I spoke to the public records office in Boston today, and it was a little unclear, and it's up to the town through the Town Managers' Act, but it is a public record. It might not get released, and it may be locked in a file, but it's a public record. That's what I'm told. If you want to share it, then it's up to the town to do it, but, so, so where, we've put in our, we've put ourselves in a position where we're only getting the information from an assistant town manager, okay, who works. And this is a positive conversation. It's, it's not a personal one, and it's not saying anything is, is done intentionally wrong. But what we've done is, we've got the information that's given to us. So, has anyone gone in and looked at, what we were told last time was, we could go in and look at the records. We can't take them with us. We can't make copies, but we can look at it. So the overall evaluation that we got as a board, there were four comments, and, you know, highlight them. "I'm very happy with the work that Bill did. The town is being managed well." The third one is, "My opinion, we're very lucky to have the town manager." And the fourth one is, "Keep up the good work." And there was, you know, but there were five comments on the evaluation. Now, we can't see who wrote what, but there was somebody, one of us, that wrote a lengthy review, and it was not positive. And we may disagree with it, or we may agree with it, but that person took a lot of time to detail discussions that they've had with this, with their opinion, or his opinion, and we never saw it. So when we look at this review that's given to us by an assistant town manager, that is under the town manager, one, I think there's a conflict, because that assistant town manager is presenting something for her boss. What it used to be was, the bosses as the selectmen did the review, and it filtered down. My question is, how can a lengthy, so there were five comments, the overall, the overall summary was only four of them, only the positive one, and the one that had constructive criticism, we never saw. And if you didn't go in and see it, I think the, the review was probably from Gina Coppola, who had just left, but I think there were very helpful comments, and I think we had a right to see it, and I think we had a right to discuss it.
We as a board did have a right to see it, to go up and look at that document.
Correct. But when the overall evaluation comments came out, it wasn't included in it. So why would you go up and look for something if you didn't know it was there? My point is, when we control the system, we did the evaluation and we discussed it. How does 20, one, two, three, four, five, how does 20% in the only negative review that's more in-depth and more lengthy than any of the, you know, "He did a good job," not appear in our sound?
Question, though, when you said when we controlled it, I've been on the board three complete years, and we've always done it this--
We've done it exactly this way.
Yeah, what I said in the--
Exactly this way.
Correct. Meaning when we controlled it, when the board controlled it, when we had a review with past two town managers, the Board of Selectmen reviewed it. So one of my point is, over time, now we have an assistant town manager, which we didn't have before. The assistant town manager is running the review and controlling the information that comes back to us. If the board's okay with that, I don't think that's the process that we want, because there is an inherent conflict of interest when there's somebody that we don't control, we don't hire, we don't have the contract, the town manager does. So my question is, why didn't this constructive criticism get on something that was given to us that says, "Overall evaluation comments"?
Well--
Because it's a summary, Jim.
Yeah, and this summary is a public document, so if somebody puts something negative, whether they're still on the board or they're not on the board, and it goes public and there's no way to dispute it, I mean, I could say Bill's a jerk, you know, fire him, and--
Understood. If it was, if it was in a personal attack, in a personal attack, but if you go in there and you read what the comments were, I don't think you'd be saying that. There were constructive concerns--
I, I read through all of those, and there's always three sides to every story, too, so--
So, so where do we give the authority for someone else to decide which of the three sides is correct and not the board?
Mr. Chairman, I think the, the important point here is that evaluation's supposed to be instructive for the individual, the employee. Each individual board member makes its own evaluation. That information individual all comes to the employee, meaning me. I take all those comments very seriously. That's the whole purpose of it. It's not to, it's not, you know, there are, there are ways in which you can summarize anything you want, and quite honestly, I take the, the negative comments or the positive comments, I use them all instructively. So I think the question is, how is it being used? And it's being used properly, because it all gets filtered through the chairman. It doesn't just get filtered through the assistant town manager. It gets filtered through the chairman. The chairman gets to look at it.
So the chairman got to see this list before it went out to everybody?
He saw that. You read the whole thing. You read the whole thing. Right? You read, you read the whole thing?
I did.
You, you read the summary.
I read the summary. I went through the other document.
Yeah.
So, so when we have something that says, "Overall evaluation comments, summary," in what I think is constructive criticism, it doesn't rise to the level of having it on your review?
That's not for me, that's not for me to say. I don't make, I don't prepare the final document, but I will tell you that I take all those comments instructively. That's, that's the whole purpose of it, is to use it as a, as a, as an instructive document.
But if it's, if it's a disc, so usually the reviews are, "How do you think you're doing? We listen to you, 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 you come back, so let's have that in a public discussion." I, I think it's bothersome that it went to an assistant town manager and came back to us with the label that this is a summary, when it's clearly not a summary.
Well, Jim, that, that's happened for the last four years. And four years, and also, it also goes through the chairman.
Which, which--
It also goes through the chairman. It doesn't go through just the assistant town manager.
Jim, even, even as a lowly HR director in my previous town, I did the town administrators at the bidding of the Board of Selectmen. We summarized it in exactly the same way, and across the Commonwealth, you'll see that people do that. And the benefit, the summary document is a compilation of scores to show that the town manager either was satisfactory, above satisfactory, below satisfactory, that's where it was, not tried to give the essence of what people said, and it was 90% positive, which is what this, what this shows.
So you're saying that, why aren't there five comments?
Well, if you're going to, if you're going to go through--
Why aren't there five summaries? Why are there four?
Because I did four last year, and I did four the year before, just--
So, through the chair.
Yeah.
So, to, to put some clarity in this, this whole evaluation is a series of categories, and with each category, there was a series of questions, and within those series of questions, there was comment section that you can add. To me, in each one of those categories, the comment sections are the most important, not the overall, the individual based, you know, you have a comment on leadership and staff effectiveness, a comment on planning and organizing. That's, that's where it's most meaningful for the employee to see where he needs to improve on, where he needs to work on. Then you, you look at the, the total evaluation, and then that's where the overall is. But the most meaningful comments are in the individual categories.
Right.
Because that's specific to that, to that, that category. And I know, I do a lot of these every year for a lot of my direct reports, and you're doing yourself, any employee, the service, if you're not as honest as, as possible. So to me, the overall, yeah, it's great, overall, you're doing a good job, but the detailed comments in each one of those categories are the most meaningful.
I couldn't agree with you more.
And I don't know, I don't know, you can't, you don't put that on a, on a summary. You put the, the overall recommendation, but for the employee, the individual comments in each category is, is most meaningful.
So, I'll take it a step further. So I'm assuming, and I'm, I'm probably correct, that there was a lengthy review done by a past selectman. So the way that, so now, I don't even, Leah, did you do a review?
No.
Okay, so you're, you're the first one in. So now we've got a review done by four out of the five selectmen. The fifth selectman, who did not get voted in, had a lot to say, with six years' experience. But that information is not shared. Her experience is--
Should be.
Protective.
Shared with the person.
That's what it's for.
I get to see it. I get to see, I get to see it all.
Okay, so--
So, so I guess the point is, I see all of, I see all evaluations directly.
Okay, so why, why, why don't we give the courtesy of the, to the board to do the same thing?
Because you're not, because you're not involved in personnel matters, Jim.
Then, then I don't want to see the overall comments if I just see, "Keep up the good work." It's useless, right?
No, I guess the point is, is that it's, the purpose of it, it's an evaluation, the fi, the scores were cumulative, based on everybody's evaluation. All right, so that, that doesn't, that's, that's exactly what it is. It is what it is.
But the scores are satisfactory, needs improvement. Okay. So the needs improvement category, okay, was touched upon by one selectman, and it would have been nice to have that discussion. And if you're going to summarize it, summarize it in full depth. It could have been one comment that said, "There's improvement," because that's their opinion. You know, "Keep up the good work" is somebody's opinion, okay? So you get a lot out of that. You get great, okay? But don't you get a lot out of, I mean, it was, it was a page of comments.
I, I do.
So why wouldn't that be in the summary? Why wouldn't that be in the summary?
Because, well, first of all, I didn't prepare the summary, okay? So therefore--
So that's, that's why my discussion with the board--
Having said that, if you look at the reflection of the scores, the scores were vastly positive. So I think when you, when you look at it from that perspective, that was the whole gist of, of the evaluation. So I guess, you know, evaluations, I don't go around telling people other than, than the individual themselves if they have issues. I speak to them directly. That's what each one of you did.
Yeah, and it's, again--
That's the whole purpose of it.
It's a feedback tool to--
It's not to be used as a public ridicule.
Okay, but we're, we're a board of five people. That discussion should happen at this board.
Why?
Because it's part of the process where we can view, I don't know what one selectman does, all right, so the way that this board is, I can name, on one hand, how many discussions I've had with any of these people, right, and probably the like, we don't talk offline. We're here for one or two hours every other week, and it's agenda-filled, okay? I would like to see what-- I would like to see what selectmen B, C, and D did on their off-hours with you, and have that discussion. That's taken away from us.
You can't do that. You can't do that.
It's not your right to see what I wrote.
It's not... It's right. It's not appropriate for you to share, for individual board members to share what they find with other selectmen.
That's okay. I understand that. However, why go through the exercise of writing down everyone's comments unless you're completely...
I'm not writing down everyone's comments. I'm giving you the essence, that this was an extremely satisfactory evaluation.
The only comment that was left out was the one selectman that had negative comments. And that's why... And that's why I... Now, I feel like I have to go back to the other ones to see what was...
Last year, I'll give you last year's. Last year was four comments, trying to capture the essence. One was somewhat negative. So, it's not a gloss over to, you know, enhance my job or to gratify Bill. It's a performance feedback tool to motivate and to direct...
So, that performance feedback that you received didn't rise enough to put it on the overall comment?
It resonates with him.
It resonated with me.
It doesn't need to become...
But does "You're doing a good job" resonate with you? It does, but it's on the list.
So, those are the ones that don't make it onto that sheet.
But my question is, why didn't it make it on the sheet?
Why would it?
Because it's constructive feedback.
How many comments were on all those documents?
Five.
Tons, every category.
Every category has comments.
I know I put... I put a comment on just about every single category.
Mostly every...
Okay, so, when I came in, when I came in and made an appointment to review the review, it showed Bill's self-review, and it showed Bill, and it showed the numbers, one through four, and there were five comments on the bottom. Didn't say who did it, but it said if it was 20 days old or 30 days old. Where are the rest of the comments?
There were more comments on that document.
You saw the document today, yeah.
Yeah, there was more.
No, there's lots of comments on here.
Right.
Is that the document I saw this week?
Yep, same as that one.
This is it.
So, I'll go to the last page.
Two on the first page, there's one, two, three, four, five on the second page, there's one, two, three, four on the third page, so every page has comments.
And there was not reason...
Four on the fourth page.
You do these with... The way it's done anonymously is to provide him feedback on where he's... Where we personally think he's doing well or could improve. And if he took the negative feedback and he's working on it, that's what these reviews are meant for.
That's why I saw...
I understand, but...
Look at the aggregate score, forget any of the comments, he is doing, like, 90%, right?
Yeah.
You know? So, I mean, it's one through four.
I think that summary reflected that.
One through four, one lowest, four highest. His lowest score was a 3.32 by five of us, so...
I understand that, which is fine. The number rating that you came up with, it is what it is. But what bothers him is when you call in these overall comments, and they're completely, "You're doing a great job," when I know that there are people, there are selectmen, that had comments, and it's lost because it doesn't come across here. All I'm looking for is...
I mean, last year, I only put four comments as well. The year before, I only put four comments. It was... It just felt like it captured the essence of these things. I've worked with these documents in paper and electronic form for 25 years. It captured the essence. There's no trying to block anything. There was no egregious errors or things that should be up for public ridicule. It was the essence of a very satisfactory performance evaluation.
And I received all those documents. I personally received them all. And if anybody wanted to come in and speak to me directly, you could have, personally.
But I see what you're saying. Why put comments on if you're only gonna, like, either include them all, or it just become... I, you know, I see what you're saying, but why...
Why wouldn't you include them?
Why four when there's five selectmen, why, you know?
There's a very clear statute that personnel records, for reasons of, you know, an employee's privacy, shouldn't be on there.
No, I completely get what you're saying. I'm saying, if you're cherry-picking certain ones, though, is kind of what Jim's... I think it's not what Jim's getting.
Reviewing the documents, that's a good term.
Last year, I did four out of five comments. This year, I did four out of five comments.
And one of them last year was not positive.
And one wasn't positive. I mean, it was just, whatever captured the essence of the message I read throughout the thing was what I picked.
Yes, I get it.
I mean, if we want to, once we get through this, relook at how we do the evaluation, I mean, can we?
Absolutely.
Sure.
I mean, you know what I mean?
You're asking, "Can we?" We're the executive board. They should be asking, "I should do..."
I ask, "Can we?" Because I don't know, I don't have his contract in front of me.
Yeah, no, you can evaluate me anywhere.
It says satisfactory performance.
I would like to see a review in a dialogue by the board, rather than going to a third party that works for the person that this review is going for. And it's not personal, but there's a conflict here.
But it sounds personal, Jim. It really does.
I'm sorry, that...
Human resource professionals do this as a regular... Anybody who works in a company with human resources, you do this as a regular part of your job. It does not behoove me to insult or grandize Bill.
I didn't say any of these comments were insulting, but I think they were helpful.
If we didn't get along, would I put negative comments there? No, it's just I try to capture the essence of what you all said.
All the comments are right there that we can all...
Yep, and you're welcome to look at them.
Honestly, and I'm not... This is not personal. You just said, "If there's negative comments there, you wouldn't put them there."
No, I said, "If I had something against Bill," you're saying, "Because I work for Bill, that I'm gonna give him a great thing," that the facts are the facts.
All I'm asking for is to see the comments that the selectmen had that were relevant. And I can't see them.
You did, you saw them today.
Because I had to go in there and go through them.
Right, and that's your right to do it.
But why not put them on something when it's a public... This is part of his review. Everything else is lost. This is part of his review.
Because I captured the essence of your comments on the review. And I do that year after year. I've done that in the other towns I've worked in.
So, you don't think that a very lengthy review from one selectman that had probably about a handful of things that were of a concern is... Rises to the point where it could not have been some feedback?
It wasn't reflective of the entire evaluation.
It was completely reflective of one of the selectmen. That's the person's...
But, Jim, and I have that information. That's a conversation you can have with that member of the board.
For the public.
It wasn't...
I understand that, but if you have it, that's fine. But you have these other four positive ones, and you're saying that it's not relevant enough to put on here so we can see it as a public record.
Let me ask a question. If it was on here, if that was on here, we had all five comments, it doesn't change the score of his review or his valuation? It doesn't change anything, does it?
Honestly, the score doesn't impress me, it doesn't, one way or the other. But the comments from seeing the feedback is a dialogue point that we can learn from and we can discuss. I don't get a lot from, "Keep up the good work, Bill. I'm very happy to work with Bill." That's not very helpful.
I didn't write those. People wrote those.
But that's what you're portraying to the board.
That's what I did write.
As a summary.
The board wrote those.
But how about the comment where, "I'm concerned with this, I'm concerned with that. In my experience listening to constituents, this is what I'm bringing to the review." I think that's more relevant than, "Keep up the good work." Because if it's a concern for one selectman, it's a... And I'm not trying to throw mud, but if you're gonna be fair to put the good things, you need to be fair to put the points of concern on here, or it's useless.
The two specific comments were not reflective of any of the scores or categories. That's why they weren't on there. It was not reflective of the evaluation.
What do you mean, "It wasn't reflective of the evaluation"?
It's a personnel thing.
So, as far as I'm concerned, my evaluation was my evaluation. Your evaluation's your evaluation, Chris, Jim, whoever, okay? It's not gonna... It's not gonna affect my comments, like I said, that I put in the category section, because I know there was comments in the category section where, you know, "Doing a good job, but this area could be an area of improvement going forward." Those comments are in those individual categories where it carries more weight than an overall comment that's... All right, so, we ended up with a 3.5 average, whatever it is. Okay, overall, he's doing a good job. Keep it up. But in this area, you know, we'd like to see some improvement, or, you know, this area, you know, maybe you could have done some things a little bit better, or this area you're doing great on, okay? It's in the individual category section that carries more weight than the overall recommendation.
We have different opinions.
Maybe next year, we don't include overall comments. You just keep the scores in there, then that would make people feel more comfortable.
Or you change the header instead of overall evaluation.
The absolute header on the performance evaluation.
Okay, well, maybe we...
You change that.
Or, how about this? You get rid of the score and have a dialogue of what the pros and cons are, and the mistakes and the good things that you do.
But to quantify it, in order to have the contractual obligation that has to be, how do you weigh non-quantifiable things to say it's satisfactory? That's why this is in the American score.
I think the contract is, if it's a satisfactory review, then it triggers the raise, right?
Right, but I think having numbers in... Historically, having numbers is easier to quantify that something was satisfactory than just saying...
But having numbers provides no feedback to have any discussion. And I'm always... At least, there's one thing I've been consistent about, public...
You always have the ability to have the conversation with me. You always do. Every one of you do. And so, the issue is, when it comes to evaluations, I do one-on-one evaluation with the employee. I'm asking you to do the same thing with me.
So, that's where we differ a little bit, because, and I said this last week, it's uncomfortable doing somebody's review in public. But I'm sorry, that's what we're here to do, right?
No, not necessarily, because the process that has been laid out for you is the right process to do that reasonably. And so, and I say that reasonably, because there have been... There has been issues about that with releasing public documents that way and making... Turning them into public records, when in fact, they're supposed to be personnel records. So, you have to be very careful in how you do it in that regard. The process been laid out for you is okay, because it meets the requirements.
But there's one thing that I am, at least I'm consistent, right? So, my feeling is, public should... Public discussion should be held in the public, okay? With the exception of, if Bill, if any one of us had an issue and we have to go behind closed doors because there's an issue. But I'm a... And I'll stick to this, that a town manager review, the highest ranking official in the town deserves, the public deserves, to have a public review of that person. Now, if it was personal and there was big issues, we can talk about it. If everything's public, I mean, if everything's positive, great. But if we're gonna go through this system where our individual stuff goes to an assistant town manager and it comes back to us with summarized, we're leaving it up to the subjectivity of somebody that's below you under your hiring and firing, not us, because we don't... She doesn't contract, and that's what...
So, I disagree with you, Jim, because it doesn't just leave it... Because again, that gets handed to the chairman. And the chairman reviews those documents.
And we all get to look at it, so there's nothing...
Right, and you all get to look at it.
There's nothing... All of us get to look at those documents.
That's where the difference is. I don't disagree that I shouldn't be publicly evaluated. And it's very uncomfortable for me, it's uncomfortable for you. I get it. I'm not afraid of it, because I've been doing it for a long time. I'm not afraid of it. It's just the fact that it's awkward. It's awkward for all of us. The question is that if you have an issue to bring up, you have the right to bring it up. And I have the right to respond to it.
Okay.
So, there's that kind of dialogue that can occur. I guess my point is that it's just that how... It's the form that you're taking here that's raising the concern. You're right, the only thing that I'm hearing, you're upset because there was no negative comments in the summary.
No, no, I was...
Just that?
My concern is, there wasn't a representative summary that represents the... All the comments weren't positive, but yet the summary we get was, "Everything's great." Okay? There are room... There was one selectman, and maybe... So, step back a little bit. There's no voice at all for that selectman, other than if we go to your office and look at it, because that selectman is no longer here. Six years, I think it warrants a little bit of... That six years of service with some very valid points didn't make it onto this piece of paper.
But the evaluation did. The scores actually did. The scores actually did.
But that selectman has every right to bring up comments with the town manager, and there's lots of things reflected in there by selectmen, saying, "I've had back and forth with the town manager on X, Y, Z."
I always welcome the feedback, and I think, and, you know, when we get into this public discussion like this, it's... I welcome the opportunity to improve any process that you have available to you. That's... I'm all about that. I'm very supportive of that. The thing that bothers me is that if you're just trying to single out negative things, okay, that's fine. That's your prerogative. But, I mean, everybody else on the board thought it was fine.
Bill, I'm not singling out negative things. If you look at my review, positive. I probably gave you one of the highest scores, right?
Listen, I thought, yeah, I don't... No quarrels with it, no quarrels with it.
I think mine was the longest. I think the town is being managed well, blah, blah, blah. Mr. Keegan has approached the topics fairly with consistent professionalism. So, this isn't a pitch for me, because I didn't get my way. I gave you one of the highest ratings. My issue is, somebody did not give you a high rating, and it doesn't show up anywhere, unless I make an appointment to go see you.
No, but it shows up in the evaluation. I get to see it.
But it doesn't show up in what you give us. It doesn't. And I'm sorry, but there was five comments on the bottom that were substantial. Four of them are on here and one is not. If you can say it doesn't rise to that, I'm speaking for someone that's not here anymore, not for myself, all right? Why... You can shake your head, Mary Beth, and roll your eyes.
The numerical comments in the categories that constitute a satisfactory and not satisfactory performance review, these are just anecdotal comments that every year, I pick four and quantify them. The reason I didn't pick that one was because it was this long. And I picked... Last year, I picked one that was negative. I felt like it was more reflective. The item was more reflective.
So, if we're going towards getting rid of the comments, which you had just suggested, so next year, we just do the numerical?
Just do the scores.
Okay, so, you have a score of one through four, okay? A selectman comes in and gives you a one, meaning horrendous. Who's... What's the issue? How do you find out what that issue is? Where's the dialogue? It's nice to get fours, but where's the comment for the one? How do you figure that out?
The board member will come to me and tell me.
Or you see it on your evaluation.
I would see it on the evaluation as well.
And there should be a comment.
If you wrote a one in that section, you would write a comment in that section.
No, but we're saying, because he's a problematic, we're not gonna do the comments anymore, that was just-
No, 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 the overall anecdotal comments or what else.
At the end, the overall assessment. They're not the individual questions, like where you would put a one in.
These are the overall ones.
Yeah.
These are just kind of the little elevator calls, keep up the good work, good job, you know.
So, so to my point, these are the, so what you did is you took all the overall comments and you summarized it. What you did is you took four of the overall comments and you left off one.
Exactly what I did last year and the year before, just because the overall comment was very, very long, and I have to deliver this in a short amount of time to you.
Okay, so can I suggest this? If you, if you haven't gone in, has, has anyone else seen all the comments?
I have. To be honest with you, my, my evaluation is my evaluation. I don't, like I said, I don't care what Chris put, you put, Doc put.
The only one that cares about what all five of us put is him. I don't care what you-
See, I disagree. You might not care what I have to say, or my feelings or my experiences, but I certainly care what your experiences are. And I certainly care what a past selectman had to say that can't be here to speak.
Then if I wanna know that, I'll go up to his office and look at the whole thing.
You could do that, you could do that.
Because it's there, it's there for us to see. You saw it now, Chris has seen it.
Yep.
If I wanna see it, I can go see it.
I don't care if anybody wants to see it after the meeting.
All right, we've kicked this to death. I would propose next year we do it a little bit different, that we get some board input, that we can have a dialogue, rather than giving, giving it to a computer to tally and then we don't see it, and then we're relying on a summary, that the only way-
We're relying on the summary, we can go up there and see the whole thing whenever we want.
But it's easier said, but you don't do it.
Because I didn't wanna do it, you did wanna do it and you, and you didn't.
All right, all right, so what we're gonna do is, I will get with Mary Beth and see what else there is out there. I don't know how the board used to do it four years ago, we can relook at that, I don't know, but this, we'll look at other options.
This is the exact form we've used in all the years that we've been here. Just this year, we put all the categories on an electronic performance evaluation. It's the exact same categories, the exact same scoring, but instead of being a paper copy or something you emailed me and we compiled, to me it's a, it's a really clean way of doing it, it tallies itself.
Does it make sense when all the evaluations are submitted, just to distribute it to the board as a, as a, for your record?
We've been told we can't.
You can't do that, because then it creates, then it creates a public record by doing it that way.
It becomes a public record.
It's part of his poll-
And performance evaluations aren't public record.
Right.
But that's why we have it here, if you wanna see it. All your scores are together on this document.
But it should be done, it should be done in closed doors, it should be done.
So maybe that's, we can keep going in a circle, but I, I think a, a review of the town manager should be a public discussion, and I think a lot of that is taken away, and you may disagree, but to go on my time, we, we don't have an office in there, we don't have a key to it, we're gonna make an appointment, we can't make copies, it's very limiting and very difficult and very ominous to do.
I want a copy of someone's performance evaluation.
Excuse me?
Why would you want a copy of someone's performance evaluation?
So we can review it and hopefully make that position a little bit better.
Well, you, you have that opportunity every year to do that.
And by the way-
Every year.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be just a, just a yearly evaluation. It should be evaluating-
Daily.
-your employees on a, on a regular basis. And if you have an issue with, with Bill or anybody, don't wait until the, the review period, you, you know, you're doing, you're doing the employee disservice if you just wait for the annual review, you gotta, you gotta pull them aside and say, hey.
Again, again, my review was positive, I don't have a, an issue with Bill, what I have an issue is with the stuff that was reported back to me. And I don't know that until this time, when we do a formal review. I wasn't able to see this three months ago, because no one did it three months ago, I saw it today. Had I gone back last year for the four comments and, you know, this is the first year I've looked at it, and it's an issue with me, if I go back last year in the, maybe that'll be an issue too.
I have last year from when I looked at it too.
All right, we'll set up an appointment, and I will, because this is important, that public discussion is important to me, and not behind closed doors, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not suggesting that it don't be, we're having this dialogue really in the open right now. I mean, I guess, I guess, so the sort of point is, is that I'm perfectly fine with having an open constructive dialogue. I guess the question is that you as individuals have the option to do it individually, it gets summarized in a final score, and, you know, the comments then get reviewed with the chairman of the board, the board, and then, then they get, then they get presented to the board. So final, that's how it gets finalized. So I guess, if you wanna change the process, it's your prerogative. I don't have a problem with that.
So that's the discussion I opened with, and it was a discussion with the executive board, can we put it on an agenda in the future to change the process? Because I think there's a conflict, and I think it takes away from the benefit of having this discussion and feeling out everybody's comments and experiences. And to the point, we had one selectman that had six years of experience, and unless you go in there and, and ask for an appointment to see it, there's no way that you would know what her comments were, at all.
But that's, but that's usually the case, Jim. I mean, I, I don't have multiple people evaluating, I'm, I'm the only one who really has multiple people evaluating me, and I, that all comes to me directly. I get that. So it doesn't mean that I don't get it, I do receive it. The question is, how do you wanna, you know, discuss it amongst yourselves as individuals or collectively? And, and my position on that is like, it's supposed to be an individual valuation. You ultimately get, and then the ultimate score is what's, what's the, is the calculation at the end. And that's the calculated score for everybody. So I mean, and that's reflective of everybody's score at that point, but I still get your individual reviews directly. So I, so I do benefit from that, I do benefit from that.
But again, we can go back and forth, it would have been nice if we got a summary of all the comments, and we didn't. And I'm sorry, I still feel strongly, that review warranted one line on this that said there were constructive criticism, one line. One, there was five comments, four of them were positive, all four were on here, one, the most in-depth review that was in there, lengthy and detailed, didn't make it on one line. So unless you go in there and set an appointment with the assistant town manager under doors that you can't make copies and you can't take it with you, the board never sees this. It gets filed, okay? And, and what, what the, what your record is, is this, with no indication that there was anything else. That's my issue.
No, that's not true, because the record, my record reflects all five reviews with that summary, combined.
The summary isn't what goes in the personnel file.
Public record of the summary.
Yes.
This is, this is the public record.
You had brought up last year's progress, that's part of his, his personnel-
What goes in Bill's personnel file is not the summary.
Right.
It's the performance evaluation with all the comments goes in his personnel file.
But nobody sees that. So what we, which is fine, which is fine.
Any board member who would like to see this is welcome to see this.
Which is fine, but what the boards, and, I mean, it's, comment number four, five words, keep up the good work, okay?
Those are the overall summaries, not the individual category ones.
So why doesn't the overall summary contain?
We've had this conversation.
Well, you know what, Mary Beth, you're laughing and you're rolling your eyes over there.
I'm not rolling my eyes, I'm just saying we repeated the same dialogue over and over.
So let's, 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 let's talk about what that comment was. It was somebody that spent a lot of time with detailed constructive-
Right.
-negative stuff, positive stuff, but it was valuable.
It was valuable to him.
Right, and I'm not gonna disclose it.
Then don't give me this, because this has no value.
All right, so, all right, so what we're gonna do is-
Keep up the good work, Bill, has no value to-
I didn't write it, Jim, I just reflected the essence.
What we're gonna do is, I will get with Mary Beth, we'll look at other ways to do it, see how we used to do it in the past. I don't think we can put on the agenda to change it, I mean, we have to collectively look at what is the best way to do this, under all of the public meeting laws and the personnel issues and stuff. A lot of this can't be public, I mean, it's his personnel file. So I will spend time with her and anybody else that I can, and I will report back to our board. I mean, that's about the best we could do right now, because of the situation, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the, the good news, it was a good review. Don't get lost in any of this discussion.
Bill, I gave you a good review.
You did, you actually did.
But what I'm coming down to is, the notes doesn't reflect the complete story, and that's all I'm asking for. So right now, I think this is a, this is a complete record, this is an incomplete record in my opinion.
No, but this is the summary that is the public record and just, Jim doesn't feel that it, that it's a whole reflect.
I get it, I understand.
All right, so we have to vote on this now, the, approve the review.
Yeah, motions are made, it's been seconded, we just completed discussion.
There you go, thanks. All right, all those in favor of the town man, approving the town manager's evaluation? I. Opposed?
I'm gonna oppose it, and for the record, because I think it's incomplete, I think it was, not the information that was in the review should have been on the summary. And also for the record, my evaluation of you was positive, but I don't think-
Why wouldn't you give a positive response then, for vote?
Because what, the motion was to review, was to approve this bill.
No, no it's not, it's to approve my evaluation, the overall number is changed.
This is your evaluation.
The overall number is changed.
The evaluation.
Right.
That is a newspaper article, a blurb of what this is. You have the exact scores that were in this document in front of you.
If we put every negative comment on this public document, the scores wouldn't change, and that's what we're voting on.
I'd be reading the whole performance evaluation too, which is, I'm not allowed to do by public record, I'm allowed to do a summary, an essence.
And that's what I was looking for, was a complete summary, Mary Beth, we can keep going over this, in my opinion it wasn't complete.
Anybody abstaining? Did you vote?
No, I didn't vote, because I didn't know if I should abstain or I didn't-
She didn't, she wasn't part of the evaluation process, so.
I wasn't part of the evaluation process, so I-
All right, so it passes three in favor, one against, one abstaining.
Thank you.
All right, on a happier note, elections update. So last Tuesday, we had the middle school seventh graders here for civics class. Jim, Jim came in, it was a group of probably forty, forty-five students here, they all broke into little teams, they shadowed different department heads throughout the day. I had a group of five that were the selectmen, so we explained to them what our role is and what they do, and then they all convened back in here and had a selectmen's meeting with all the topics that they discussed. It was, it was a pretty awesome day. Kids were-
It was tremendous.
-pretty smart, asked some good questions, they complained about Market Street when that was getting fixed, so that was good. But, good job to every, all the department heads that, that worked with them and went to the school, and good job to the teachers for teaching civics in the class. And then just thanks to the Founder's Day Committee for a great Founder's Day, good parade, good field, I didn't make it to the fireworks, but I heard they were great.
Yeah, it was great.
The weather was perfect. Anybody else have anything to add?
The fishing derby, I'd say too. I know there was a lot that went on the weekend, but it was personally, it was my first time going on the fishing derby, and it blew me away, the kids had just an amazing time in that property. I'd never really gone back up deep into the lane property, and I was just, I was amazed at how beautiful it was, and what it sounded like.
Anybody have anything else? All right, town manager update.
All right, well, thank you. Just today, this morning, I spent the morning in Boston at the MAPC where they kicked off, their kickoff event for what is going to be known as the Community Rail Communities Coalition, where they're gonna be, we're talking with the town managers and the mayors of all the communities that have rail service, to see if in fact it makes sense to form a coalition to, to help improve services, help to serve, sort of as, and to work with the MBTA and MBTA Advisory Board, to come up with new, new ways to help vision how the service will be well into the future. And it was actually a very interesting discussion, it was, it was, it lasted about, about an hour and a half, talked a lot about, about what the state of the situation is today, where it could be into the future, ideas of what makes sense to, to talk about, how the, what some people view as the best way to provide the services going forward. And quite honestly, it was, it was interesting that most of us there all agreed that, that rail is important for the, the healthy growth of communities, as well as the, the maintain a quality of life in terms of providing the, the opportunity for people to get to work in the morning, as well as drawing from the, from the labor pool into this area as well. So it really is, is a good tool that a lot of us wanna try and improve upon. I think the system is pretty old, needs, needs a lot of improvements. But that said, it also, everybody agrees that, that providing more level, or greater service to the communities is a better, better way to do that. Just the, another thing that was brought to my attention earlier this week was that the Affordable Housing Trust Designer Review Board actually is missing a member now, because Jenny was the member for that, for this board on that committee. So it's not something you need to take up tonight, but some of you need to think about that, we do need to put it on an agenda for consideration at a upcoming meeting for, for a board member to be appointed to that, to serve in that role. So it's, it's, it's one which has been talked, talked about for several ways, several times now, several, for several years, especially where we're looking at ways we can improve housing in the downtown area, as well as providing housing for the fifty-five in all the community, as well as housing for, affordable housing for the millennials moving into town, so, or that are here and here in town. So we would welcome the opportunity to have a member of the board step forward to, to serve in that capacity. Also, there had, there is going to be some work done on the County Street Bridge in Mansfield, that's gonna result in some detours, and also they're gonna be replacing the track bed, the, the track crossing over on Spring Street. That work is supposed to be done later this month, we're working with, with the town of Mansfield, is, then helping to, to work out the, the detours, as well as the, the ability to get traffic going in both directions under County Street while it's occurring. There was at one time a long, a thought about just making it one way, and that would have rerouted people all the way around, particularly causing problems for the commuter crowd that like to use the County Street lot for parking in the morning. They're looking to try and address that now, so we can keep the traffic going both ways while the construction is going on. That project is gonna take about six months, six to seven months to get done before they get the bridge finished. The actual bed construction on, on, on Spring Street however, will probably be done, probably within a weekend, they're saying three to five days to get it done, so they're hoping to get it done, start on a Friday and maybe finish on a Sunday, hopefully if everything goes as planned.
That bridge work, is that only, pretty much, the biggest people it would affect would be the people parking in that parking lot?
Yeah, for the most part, and that's the reason why we were hoping that if, if they make, make it both ways of traffic, then it, then it should be okay. Then we wouldn't, we wouldn't drive people around the length, because it would, it would delay people's ability to get to their train on time, we don't see that happen.
And you need to have a resident sticker, so we have a list of all those people.
We do have a list of all those people, and if, and if we are gonna, if that is gonna be changed, we intend to notify all those, all those residents. Those are the things, and then again, I just wanted to say thanks to everybody, all the department heads, the middle school teachers, all the departments for cooperating in, in the first ever Student Government Day, which was, I think, a tremendous success, and great to see everybody here, the kids I thought were just tremendous, they were very informed. It was interesting, I've done this before in, in Gettle, for twelve years, we did it with high school students, and this year we did it with, with middle school students, and I found, believe it or not, I found the, the middle school's kids more, more engaging. They were more into the issues, they weren't, they weren't afraid, they weren't inhibited by any way about speaking out on issues, and I thought it was quite interesting to hear what they had to say, and, and their points were pretty well taken, so it was, it was great to see that dialogue going on. And thanks to everybody for doing that. Thanks to the craft group, providing lunch, that was actually quite nice, was being able to take the kids up there for, for lunch.
They really liked that.
I really thought that was, that was a nice finish to the whole day, so it was great for them to do it.
All right, Mary Beth, assistant town manager's update?
So on everybody's favorite topic, performance evaluations, we're currently townwide in the process of doing them all, they're due between May fifteenth and June fifteenth for a lot of our groups, DPW, Dispatch, Non-Union, Steelworkers, all of those. I think all the employees are probably glad that their comments are not going public. But again, we, we've had a lot of success with the online performance management tool. Happy to say in your folder today is the DPW ratified MOA, I was waiting for their signatures, you guys are gonna, guys and girls will be signing that today, as town meeting voted it. And Thursday, we're kicking off library negotiations for their next contract, so we'll keep chugging away at all of our contract negotiations. And most importantly, I have kind of a news flash for all of you. In January of 2019, I will be, I'm announcing that I will be retiring from Foxborough to pursue two of my absolute favorite passions. I have the opportunity to care for a granddaughter two days a week, and I will probably continue in municipal consulting, HR, or some kind of municipal work, two days a week. I'm providing six months' notice in order to successfully transition my successor. We've started a lot of great work here, I like to leave a place better than I found it, and I think centralized HR and policies and a lot of the streamlined strategies and collective bargaining, sort of streamlined things that we've done have really enhanced the town, and some future things, hopefully people will thank us for, some of the stuff we've bargained out that, and, and health insurance negotiations that we've done that will put the town in good stead for the next twenty years or so. But mostly I wanna thank the Board of Selectmen, I've learned so much from all of you, not always do we agree, but I've learned a lot from all of you, and I appreciate that. The Personnel Board for their support, we reconvened them when we got here, and they've been an extremely supportive instrumental group in getting our policies done. To Bill Keegan for his inspirational leadership, it's been truly a partnership, and I appreciate that. The excellent team of department heads and town employees for all their teamwork. I'm really sad to leave the friends I've made here, the superstars we've recruited since my time here, and the best office staff I think I've ever compiled in my entire career, Amanda, Sarah, and Pam. So I'm proud of all we've accomplished these past few years, and I will remain a friend of Foxborough, I'm still here for six more months, finishing up everything. I'll always be a phone call away, and I will make an offer to Chairman Mitchell that pro bono, as a consultant, I will come back and work on that performance document with you, saving the town money. But thanks, everybody, you know, don't wanna be part of my own wake, I'm gonna be here for six more months, very actively participating and trying to get a bunch of things knocked down, but duty calls, I get the chance to be with my daughter's daughter two days a week, and have some flexibility and do some consulting, so, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Yeah, thanks for getting everything in order and, and all the work you've done on lining all of the contracts and everything, so.
And we still have time to go.
I'll save my comments for the, towards the end of when she's gone, because we still have a lot of work to do.
We do.
But, but I have to tell you, you know, it's been a tremendous partnership, but we've, we've got a lot of work done together, and I couldn't have done it without you, so I appreciate, I appreciate all the work that you've, you've been doing.
It's been a pleasure. This is a great community, and I've had so much fun.
So great, thank you. Great, thank you. There was one thing I didn't want to address, Mr. Parker's comments. I am, I'm really, I take umbrage with a lot of his comments, because he misrepresents the facts in many cases. He states over and over again, he doesn't have records. We've given him records upon records upon records. He, he goes back with his wife and him, sending different records requests, even though they're the same records request, and then saying that, you know, you don't give it to my wife, you have to give it to me. So, it's, it's a game. It's almost a game that he's playing with us at this point. Not sure what, to what, what purpose it serves, because we're moving forward quite fruitfully in, in terms of the, the, the CEMRIC process. We have another meeting scheduled for this week. Rob has been working really hard to, to try and get a lot of things done. We're going to, the process of the, the report itself is, of the, of the CEMRIC report, of the, of the facility, but HIRAC is going to be presented on Fri, on, on Tuesday to the board, so we'll be able to do that. We, the indications that I had were previously were preliminary indications. As I, I believe I used those terms, preliminary indications, whether it was, it was going to be a positive outcome of that report. So, we actually do have the, the report. We're going to be able to talk about that. We'll certainly provide a copy of that to Mr. Parker, because I'm sure he'll be requesting that. And, but I do take real umbrage with some of the comments that he'd made publicly, stating that we told people to stay off the property. I personally told people to stay off the property. That has never occurred, ever. That's public property at the, at the state reservation. That has never occurred. Those words have never come out of my mouth, and I, and I really take a huge exception to that. It was, they reported to the press that way. That is not, absolutely not true. With that, that, and land up there where the, where the driveway is, is actually an easement that goes to that property on the top of the hill. That is, that is, that, that whole area is public property, and people have the right to walk through there and do whatever they need to do. The, the facility itself, there's been comments sent to the state, to the governor, to, by Mr. Parker and his wife about how inappropriate this place is. It's been ineffective for sixty, for fifty years. The building's been there. We're not looking to change the building or move the building off its, off its current location. We will, we will repair the building. We will, we will improve the building, and, but it will be the exact same building in the end, other than maybe some additions to it, or some, some improvements to it. But we're not going to change the building itself in terms of looking, doing it to a different location. It's going to stay in the same location. So, the driveway leading up to it is, again, something that's, that's, the, there is an easement that passes over that road to allow the access to the property. That process, that access has been in place for, for the whole fifty years that the building's been there. We're not looking to change that as well. So, that's the same, same thing's going to be in place. It's, it's frustrating, I will tell you, extremely frustrating when you provide documents to people, and then they say, oh, no, you didn't give that to me. I, I've offered the documents to both him and his wife. They, they can have them if they want, and, you know, but they have to pay for them. We, we collected documents, and then I responded to Mrs. Parker's comments prior to town meeting. Twice I responded to them, and then found, and then they never showed up, showed up at town meeting until even to raise an issue. The both, the Article Nine passed by unanimous vote at town meeting. There wasn't a single question asked about it, even though they said, we got to have the answer before town meeting. They didn't even show up. So, I, it's very frustrating when we, when we try to respond to people in a, in a positive way. We've, we've reached out to him directly, him and his wife, to say, look, come in and speak, sit down and speak to us. If you don't understand the process, we'll explain it to you. We're happy to. But if there's a document specifically you're looking for, we'll try and get it for you, that we have, that we haven't already provided to them. And that's, it's very frustrating. I don't know if, if Rob would, would like to add to that, but I just don't know that Rob is here as well.
Sure, if you don't mind. Come on up to the table.
Good evening. I'm Rob Fredon, the Executive Director of the Southeastern Massachusetts Regional 911 District. I recently, the district has only received one request, and I received that on Sunday. We are still within our ten business days response time. I'm compiling the documents that Mr. Parker has requested, that we could provide Mr. Parker, that are not exempt under various laws or security issue to provide to Mr. Parker or anyone else. The, the district has taken a firm stance that we are going to be as transparent as possible without compromising security or other bidding processes. Our website contains all of our publicly released minutes. And I've aided in not only the four towns that are members of the district, but the state in providing documents to Mr. Parker. Those appear to be the only public records requests we've received at this time. The state has provided documents as well, and has also been challenged. As far as the HIRAC facility, we're still in the process of evaluating that. That has not been adopted by the district. It is still property of American Tower. There is approximately six acre parcel of land that is private property within and is contiguous in the state forest. That is the parcel of land that we are looking to possibly acquire and turn into the Regional Communication Center. We are committed, we have said this over and over, to being public stewards of the property, allowing public access to as much of that property as we can without compromising security. And the road leading to the facility will remain public, even though there is a deeded easement. Those are things we've considered as part of acquiring this property. It is not, is part of our deliberation process and our considerations, but it has not been made official and adopted by the district yet. The building, in its initial feasibility study, there is some modifications that would happen to the building, but we are also looking-
They're coming to get you, bro.
Is that the Coast Guard? That'd be my luck. Our intent is to be good stewards in not only the environment, but the taxpayer. We're looking at using insulation methods that would get us close to LEED certification. We're not actually looking to become a LEED certified agency because of the cost involved with that. We're looking into using photovoltaic cells, solar panels to reduce our greenhouse emissions and our energy use, and other various environmental mitigations that would be applicable for a building of this magnitude and as a public building. So, I, I think we're doing our part. We're trying to be extremely open. This process is, for anything that happens with the district, it not only goes through a public, a discussion within the district, which is a public, separate public body, but it also goes through the four towns. So, to say we're not transparent is, it's just not the fact, because not only are we reviewed like a town is in a public meeting, but then four other public bodies, plus the State 911 Commission and the State 911 Department, are reviewing our actions and, and do it publicly. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, but-
By the way, our office still stands to Mr. and Mrs. Parker. If they want to come in and meet with us, and go over any document they, you know, any discussion they want to have, we have to explain it to them. But with the consistently paint, paint this picture that we're not being cooperative is simply not true. It's just factually not true. And so I, I think it's, it's very frustrating. You know, we get these repeated requests for documents and documents and documents. And quite honestly, we've given them documents, every document that we know we can give to them. They think there are other documents that exist. They simply don't exist, or they're not in our possession. If that's the case, then we just don't give it to them.
And to, to speak about the feasibility study, Mr. Parker's alleged that the feasibility study was never completed. That was before I was on board with the district, and even before the district was formed. But my understanding, from my limited conversations with the participants of that, that process, was that there was an issue with the vendor who compiled the original feasibility study, which discussed the feasibility of combining the four member communities now, plus Attleboro. The, the fact, my understanding is that the feasibility study was never, the report was never finalized because of an issue with the vendor, but that does not subtract or diminish the fact that the research was conducted, the report, the feasibility, the feasibility study was completed, the project was deemed feasible. My personal evaluation of the data and my examination of the four towns, my personal opinion, this project is feasible. Because there may not be a formalized feasibility report that says final on it, does not mean that the feasibility study was not completed. And my understanding and my opinion is that it was not misrepresented in any PowerPoint discussion. I'd be more than happy to revisit those findings with you, discuss statistics, discuss standards, and how standards aren't being met, and other various financial and regulatory issues that are compelling the, the district to move forward with this project.
One question before anything else happens. How much can we discuss this tonight, where it wasn't on the agenda?
Well, again, this was, Mr. Parker raised the issue in, in the forum. I responded to it as part of my report. I would prefer that we don't take up any more discussion of this tonight, because we're going to, the board's going to meet, the CEMRIC board's going to meet this week. And if something comes out of that meeting, I think we may want to have a meeting with all four towns anyway, just to update them all collectively as to how things are going. Because I think that, you know, quite honestly, the, the process is going well fine, going along fine.
Answer for a second.
Well, before we-
Let me, I gotta say this. You know, we have a citizen's input, and we sit here and we say we can't respond. And then we're going to do it through the town manager. Then we have a guest speaker, and the guest speaker says we can answer any questions, and it goes on and on. You can't have it both ways. It's either on the agenda or it's off the agenda. But let's put it on the agenda, because this is, this is everything against open meeting bylaw right now.
Yeah, I mean, if they're meeting next week, we'll have it on our agenda, or-
Sure.
Have a four-town-
Yeah. But even this town manager's update with a guest speaker addressing the board with questions, this should not be happening right now.
Well, it just, it just, it's disturbing.
It's frustrating.
It was disturbing.
It's disturbing.
They're big, they're seriously set, comes up and makes these, these pitches on-
That was why I asked when it would be on the agenda next. Because I wanted it to be an open discussion. It's never on the agenda, so how am I supposed to-
I think my point is, we can't be having this discussion. This is not a town manager's update when we have dialogue. It's got to stop. And it's frustrating, so be it. But they're not our rules. That's, that's the open meeting-
Fair enough.
Rules. Let's put it on the agenda.
We'll put it on the agenda for discussion, and we'll deal with it in the next, next meeting. Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Action items.
All right. Approval of, move to approve thirty-one commercial parking permit renewals to expire June thirtieth, 2019.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
No.
Opposed? About nothing.
All right. Move to approve the reappointment of CIP committee members for a one-year term beginning May twenty-first, 2018, and expiring May first, 2019.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Under discussion, are we? Ginny was on the committee, so we need to appoint somebody?
Yes, we do.
From our board?
Yes.
So, do we need to do that during this discussion, before we appoint all of them?
You can just take this up now if you want, if you want to wait. It's up to you.
Does anybody currently sitting on this board want to be on the CIP committee?
Let's wait. Let's think about it.
I'll do it.
Well, I mean, we can't reappoint the committee if we don't, if we're missing one, right?
Right.
Anybody opposed to David being on it?
Should we have a vote? I mean, a, a motion?
So, now we just appoint him because this, so now we can-
So, now, move to approve again?
No, well, we've appointed David. It's already been seconded, so now we can vote on it, right? Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Move to approve the acceptance of gift donation of $250 to Foxborough Recreation from the MMTA for fishing derby supplies.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor?
Move to accept the gift donation of $1,500 to Foxborough Recreation from the Masonic Angel Foundation, Inc., for summer program scholarships.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to accept the gift donation of $44.95 to the Boydens Library from the Foxborough Monday Club in memory of Dorothea Allen for the purchase of Those Good Gertrudes: A Social History of Women Teachers in America.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of lunch at Gillette Stadium, value of $1,292 for Student Government Day 2018, on June fifth, 2018, from the Craft Group.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to approve a block party application by Michelle Crockford of Eleven Boydens Drive for Hodges Road down to Brookside Drive on June twenty-third, 2018, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM with no rain date.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Charles Gallagher in the amount of $1,170.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes from May first, 2018.
Second.
Both of them at the same time?
No, no, no. One's May fifteenth, one's May twenty-ninth.
Oh, sorry. The, the motion up above is the recommended, actually. Sorry. So, move to approve the Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes from May fifteenth and May twenty-ninth, 2018.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?